Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being back in the room. We are starting the Feichui session. We have esteemed people, guests and friends, not only on the stage but specifically on the line. I want to thank Ken Wong, who will be the moderator, and Norman Chu, who has prepared everything. Ken, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Norman, this is something that is more important than what it looks because it's referring to jade and gelite. And I would like to remind myself and you when this story starts, which was a few years ago when I was invited to be in Hong Kong for a conference from the Hong Kong Geological Association. And on the stage was my good friend Ken Wong and all the others, Norman and many others, Yang Li Xing, the professor that is there that I truly am very happy to see all of you. And they were talking about the topic of jade and gelite. I have always enjoyed, since my many decades, I go to China apart Hong Kong, but China itself, to see these wonderful precious stones. And I start trying to read about this fantastic stone. And I didn't understand initially, talking many years ago, about the value and the beauty of this stone. So I start reading. And when I was invited at that event, I was listening to this incredible scientist talking about it and I was truly impressed. And then I was requested, how come the Sichuan is not considering jades? Then I said, you know what, you are absolutely right. I take the challenge. And since there, few years has come, including unfortunately the COVID time. So for a couple of years, we never were able to continue. But we did online. We did with the interchange of information. We start moving on. I brought this issue to the Sector A at that time chaired by our beloved Roland Nafto and now under the leadership of Ken Scarlett. And then today we are here. So I want to pay tribute, gentlemen, to you all for put that challenge to my attention, which I took as my personal challenge. And since then, we are here. Because the Feichui standard, it is a very important standard. And for those who are not aware, the value of business produced by jade is second only to diamonds. So you may clearly see and percept how important it is. So I want to pay tribute to Ken Wong for this incredible effort. And I give the floor to you, Kent. And it is a pleasure seeing you at least on the screen. Thank you very much. Kent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for the kind word. This is my great honor to be invited to join this meeting. And really exciting when I collect the WhatsApp from my most respected leader, my dear president, Dr. Cavani. I think that is the great opportunity for, I mean, all the team. I mean, that they involved in making Feichui group proceeding a very punishing process. So I think thanks once again for inviting me to join. Please share my some observation, the insight about the market recent development in China. Okay, please. Please see the video. Can you help to share my presentation? Yes. Is it main venue to share the video? Or from our side? From Hong Kong side?
Kent, you have to share your screen. Could you please share your screen, Kent? Or maybe Norman? Okay, now it looks that is coming. Now coming. Thank you very much. There is no volume over there. Probably the volume is off. Okay. Probably so mute.
Kent, when you share your screen, you have to share your screen again.
Hello.
Kent, when you share your screen, you have to share your screen with audio.
Okay, just a minute. Yeah, I think some technical issue. Please wait a minute.
You have to share with audio.
Hello, main venue. Could you assign the the rights for sharing the audio? Because we cannot click the share audio for the video. Hello, AJ is here.
Yes, we can. Maybe you can. You share the video, please, with audio if you can.
We've shared the video to AJ.
All right. Okay, share the video, Kent. All right, now we are sharing.
Okay, you can see the video. Can you?
Yes, coming, 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 coming.
Coming, thank you. Sorry, we cannot share the audio from our side. We can just share the video.
Stephen?
We do not have the rights for share the audio.
Okay. All right. Few seconds and we are on. Okay, we're ready. The video is on.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests and members of Sichuan, it is my great pleasure and excitement that I'm here today as the speaker of this Feichui sector. Thank you, Sichuan, for inviting me to discuss the latest development in the Feichui market with the audience. Currently, there is a disparity in the definition of jade between Chinese and foreign customers, leading to confusion in the market. Therefore, it is imperative to establish a universally recognized term that unifies the industry and provide consistent identity for Jada as Feichui. The importance of establishing an internationally recognized trade name and standard is therefore essential. The Feichui market in China has a rich and enduring history dating back to the Qing Dynasty, which was initiated 110 years ago. Jada, naphtha and other kinds of jade boast impressive market value of remanbe 147 billion in 2022. And many geologists, B degree traders, BDC retailers, academia and laboratory scientists are involved in the continuous development of the market. In 2019, the industry has already initiated the inclusion of Feichui in the pool during the discussion in the May conference. Thereby, solidifying its status as the internationally recognized trade name. And this has garnered support from Sichuan. With Hong Kong serving as the gate to promote industry standard, we have the opportunity to collaborate with esteemed international industry experts such as NGTC, Sichuan NTA, Hong Kong. In light of the ongoing pandemic-related impact over the past year, global concerns regarding China's economic situation has emerged. While we have seen a slowdown in China's key domestic indicators, we expect the recovery to be gradual. The central government's policy to support business rebuilding serves a positive capital for economic recovery. We remain confident in China's positive momentum, further fostered by West government investment in infrastructure, technological advancement and macroeconomic policy focused on job creation and domestic consumption stimulus measures. The fundamentals of consumption in China remain intact. According to the report from Jen and Jury Trade Association of China in 2022, the overall jewelry market size has reached remanbe 719 billion. We are expecting the market to continue to improve. The retail sales of jewelry in China have experienced a remarkable shoot of 17.5% year-on-year during the first half of 2023, surpassing the overall performance of the China market. The upward trend underscores the resilience and potential of China's market, setting the stage for further advancement in the future. The market performance of Jada, naphtha and other kinds of jade has been exceptional, which has attained for 21% of the jewelry market value in China. While the overall jewelry market value has remained flat due to the pandemic's impact, Feichui, naphtha and other jade products have recorded a remarkable year-on-year growth of 15.3% outperforming other jewelry categories such as diamond and colored gemstone. Throughout ancient Chinese history, Feichui was seen as a sacred material and holds a very special status in the Chinese culture and often gives to make blessings and love as well as a symbol of prosperity and happiness. It also holds sentimental value and serves as a symbol of family heritage and tradition passing down from generation to generation. The rise of Bo Chao, a national trend that bands contemporary aesthetics and trains with a deep sense of national pride, has sparked an increased cultural appreciation and affection among younger consumers, resulting in growing demand for jewelry products. The market demand for Feichui products will continue to remain strong, driven by the rising dependence on traditional Chinese culture and the rise of Bo Chao. Hence, they initiated to provide Feichui an internationally recognized trade name who further solidifies its position as a symbol of culture and heritage. The market ecosystem has witnessed significant growth in recent years. When e-commerce played a pivotal role as a key driver in China, live streaming has gradually evolved into one of the most effective channels to reach younger consumer sadness. The online sales of Feichui has witnessed remarkable and sustained growth with live streaming driving an impressive 17 to 80% offset. While one-of-a-kind products still attract customers to physical retail stores for actual touch and feel experience, even consumers tend to aspire more expensive Feichui products through awesome houses. The testing and certification provided by NGTC as well as other international institute, including GIA, GUBI, has instilled confidence in consumers purchasing Feichui products, especially crucial for those online purchase. In addition to the common root in traditional Chinese culture, innovative product design such as bending Feichui with natural diamonds, colored gemstone and pearls has become an important driver of demand. This fusion of elements that made Feichui a fashionable item to be bought, attracting not only local bank but also many other foreign banks, which has incorporated Feichui into their jewelry design and offering showcasing and captivating banks of eastern and western culture. The establishment of industry standards and internationally recognized name of Feichui has created an ideal framework for marketing Feichui products, effectively expanding a consumer base and reaching diverse market segments. For example, foreign customer can grant access to purchasing Feichui-related jewelry products. Foreign fashion brand can tap into the Chinese market using Feichui-related product as their entry point. By providing Feichui with a recognized industry name, consumer understanding of this distinctive product is significantly enriched, pathing away from numerous growth and expansion opportunities to be cited. The ongoing development of the Feichui market relies on collective efforts from all stakeholders involved, including academia, industry association, laboratory scientists, traders and retailers. Building consumer confidence is crucial. I sincerely extend my gratitude for the dedicated efforts of industry experts such as Sichuan Feichui Advisory Members, J Hong Kong and geologists. Their commitment and contribution are invaluable. Together, less of energy the Feichui market incites the opportunity that might ahead. With a unified trade name and industry standard, we can unlock the potential of Feichui, expanding its reach and ensuring its enduring legacy.
Okay, thank you so much. I think, of course, we are highly appreciative for those all scientists, professional experts that are working hard to wage to build confidence in the trade consumer and also the wholesaler or even the miner. So I think when I invite another speaker to share some of their achievement work of the Feichui Working Group in the past years, may I invite them to share some insight? Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. I think it's a time for us to share the PowerPoint prepared by Professor Yang Li Xing and me. Our head coach Andy. Can you start my presentation video? Thank you.
Hello, India sign. Could you please share the video? The video too from Dr. Norman.
Dear friends, ladies and gentlemen, Sichuan members, it is my honor as the speaker to share the core elements and framework of the international Feichui standard discussion draft in this Feichui session. The content of this PVP is prepared by Professor Yang Li Xing and me. In my presentation, I have freely asked to share with you in the signature event Sichuan Congress 2019, GHK representative Mr. Ken Wong and Dr. Everly have reported in his Feichui special section the new world market of Feichui and also the scientific research of Feichui of last 30 years. The feedback from audience in and after this special section was very exciting and encouraging. Since then, we kept moving ahead to organize seminars and webinars of internationalization of Feichui standard. In July 2021, President Guino was invited as keynote speaker of Feichui seminar. In his keynote speech, he formally announced the formation of Feichui GHK Feichui Working Group with members of Sichuan and representatives of GHK. And he will chair this working group. This is the beginning of Sichuan's action plan. Even in the pandemic period, we still have progress and organized exchange activities. In March 2023, we have a major decision to form the Professional Writers Team and Consultation Advisors Team with a mission to prepare the discussion draft of international Feichui standard for Sichuan Feichui Working Group to review and discuss it. In May, we were very happy to meet President Guino in Hong Kong. And he accepts our invitation as the chief advisor of advisors team. Other advisors are GHK chairman, Dr. Everly, Mr. Ken Wong, GM and Director of NGCC, Professor Ming Aoyang and other important association representatives. For Professional Writers Team, GIC Professor Yang Li Xing has committed as the comedian and he invites me as the deputy comedian. And then we send invitation to experts and professors with ISO background, Feichui research background, GG standard, the China National Standard background, senior geologist with accredited Feichui Laboratory operation management solid experience to join the writers team. Having developed and host the GHK Feichui standard for 20 years, we have unlocked learning and observation experience and indicative conclusion. We always explain to the fellows and the trade people GHK standard is not just a definition or normal picture of a Feichui. GHK Feichui standard is mainly for commercial gem laboratories who intend to adopt ISO IEC 17025 QMS in their daily operation and management system according to the scope of business and customer service strategy. GHK Feichui standard is also an official key reference for the laboratory to design the layout of lab test reports or certificates. This diagram shows the structure of ISO IEC 17025 accredited Feichui Laboratory Quality Management System, the document structure and the management system. The Feichui standard is in the middle of the document perimeter as the kind of work instruction. Above the work instruction are the SOP standard operation procedures and quality menu. Below are the worship template head code reports calling forms. For GHK Feichui standard, we have an important guidance note for geologists and our fellow members to learn quality management knowledge and start their certified geologist's registration after completing the continuing professional development modules and ISO training class. The Feichui accredited labs will maintain their human resources system with certified geologists and management system in compliance with ISO IEC 17025 and fulfill the general requirements, structural requirements, resources management and process management of this standard. To give a brief and simple presentation of ISO Quality Management System of accredited Feichui Laboratory, we always use the four M, one E factors model. The human factor of man is always the most important one among other four factors. The divisional work in accredited Feichui laboratory with the boring important job specification and title. Geologists could be certified geologists and authorize military, tactical manager, quality manager, document controller and lab management representative. The other four factors like method, machine, material and environment would be in similar condition when comparing with other labs, facilities and centers. While I feel and we have a conclusion that the sustainability of Feichui laboratory is more relying on the competence of geologists and lab personnel because all personnel of the laboratory would influence the laboratory activities and the qualities of the products and services to ensure the product has reports and service conform to relevant requirements of ISO and lab established objective. Lab personnel, the management staff, operator and geologists play different roles in information process and material process flow and develop their career within doing by learning path from the basic level, intermediate level, advanced level to expert level. That is why GHK in last 20 years provide ISO training and other CBD modules to members and to keep their knowledge up today. We also observed that the lab who start providing Feichui testing services will build its own corporate governance, business policy and corporate image with a trust must based strategy. Mission to write an English discussion draft of international Feichui standard. The above observation and our inductive conclusion will give us a new thinking of the way of developing the framework of the discussion draft. First, we have to know and highlight the common discussion draft would be a knowledge product composed of different stream of knowledge. To realize our mission, the writers team member To realize our mission, the writers team member would participate series of knowledge production, knowledge management, and knowledge creation process, covering the process of qualification, articulation, combination of personal knowledge and team knowledge, knowledge in passive and explicit format. This key reference book, The Knowledge Creating Company by two Japanese professors that I post here, give us a clear guideline. As long as we adopt the concept of Faechui standard as a knowledge product and agree this direction, we could try to define the project configurations, scope of work, and core content of the discussion draft. And then identify the competence framework of Q M S knowledge, Faechui testing knowledge, and skill of lab key personnel from management staff to geologists and supporting staff. Also, we need to design the format so that we could combine and integrate the knowledge of I S O quality management, certification, and accreditation, geological knowledge, Faechui knowledge, lab practical know-how, trade application and practice, E S G principles, etc., into the discussion draft, incorporating E S G principles into the content and structure of the discussion draft. We are very happy that President Guino joined our seminar on the environmental, social, and governance E S G for brighter future of the gems and jewelry industry in March and give us a keynote speech. In this seminar, speaker have explored the value of E S G and identify E S G to be becoming new competitiveness comparing to the traditional cost-based competitiveness. The feedback of onsite and online audience was very good. The onsite and online speaker encouraged the company management to adjust the conventional mindset and business strategy, not only focusing on creating value for owner, shareholders, and investors, but also creating shared value for external stakeholders, including suppliers, customer, and consumers by utilizing the system of good practice and design eyes of E S G. For geologists, it would not be easy to identify the E S G related I S O standards. In the past two years, G H K has organized a four-day C B D training class on the topics of E S G and I S O standards with the support of international I S O expert, Mr. C K Zheng, a member of Professional Writers Team. The list of E S G related I S O standards here showing us how they are integrated with the core concept of sustainability. Traceability and transparency of the name and signature of signature will be a key part of the certification context of international Faechui standard test report or certificate. We have to think in the future, international Faechui standard, whether the geologists, authorized military, and lab management staff should have to take certain parts of lawful liability of the result and conclusion that they confirm and stay in the test report or certificate. In addition of technical competency, professional ethics, and integrity of the geologists, authorized military, and lab management staff are of utmost importance for lab to maintain this trust mark brand. We foresee that international Faechui standard would at least cover the I S O system perimeter that I have mentioned before and the other four essential modules. First, reference standard samples. Second, training materials package. Third, reference guidance of E S G practice and I S O standard. Four, competence framework or lab personnel. Globalized harmonization work across key stakeholders and associated regulatory companies. Formation of group sub G H K Faechui standard industry advisors and expert advisors from the sectors of industry, academic, research, application, since confirming the mission of internationalization of Faechui standard in twenty seventeen. A series of M O Us and collaboration in recent years signify that G H K cooperate closely with N G C C, G I T, G I C, and Macau Gold Midfield and consult one another on methods of mutual interest to achieve the common objective of advancing and promoting the international Faechui standard, gemstone standardizations, and training in the field of geology for mutual benefits. To close my presentation, I would like to quote N G C C Professor Yang Mingxing and G I C Professor Yang Mingxing's work as product. Existing China National Standard G D of Faechui and G H K Faechui standard have contributed a lot to the jewelry market and trade development and consumers confidence. Remarkable scientific research database of Faechui by Chinese professors and expert are invaluable for our charity.
Great presentation, Norman, as usual. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, President. So I think we go into another section, which is the panel discussion. Today, we are honored to have heavyweight people from Sibto, dear President, and also Mr. Ken Scara, president of Sibto Session Eight, Dr. Henko, a person of Sibto Geological Commission, and also Mr. Suwi, director of Gem Jewelry Institute of Thailand, and of course, we include Mr. Dr. Norman Xu and also Dr. Yang Mingxing. I think first of all, thank you, Norman's introduction about what they have done, worked together with the Faechui Working Team in the past years. I think this is a very comprehensive report and also telling the journey of the development of the Faechui Working Group. And also, I think we are really, really appreciate that Faechui initiative that we raised two thousand nineteen is not, is not more a dream. I think, I think we can see everything is working in progress and very smooth. Of course, I think the support from Sibto, especially President, is really important. And I think first of all, I would like to have this section, would like to ask, I mean, our honorable guests to share their insight, observations, or any idea in an open and also inclusive approach. May I ask the first question, raise the first question that to Mr. Ken Scara? I think because of record, I know you are expert in lab management and also, of course, a very important geologist. What do you think the framework and the composition of five core parts, including the I O S basis, Faechui testing standard documents, and four different knowledge module that Mr. Norman, Dr. Norman Xu present? How do you see? Have you, can you give us some other, your, your idea? Yeah, can you?
Let me begin by saying congratulations on a, on a wonderfully presented document there with your I S O style in a very similar format to the best practices for any lab. I can't think, I think maybe G I T follows that same I S O standard, but there are very few other labs around the world that have signed on to it. Do you, do you? No, okay. So we, it, it, it's particularly wonderful to see that there in Hong Kong, China in general, you've produced a, a standard operations document for your Faechui laboratories. I personally think I'm overawed by it. The fact that you've managed to do that and get labs involved is pretty awesome. And I'm a little jealous, frankly, because I would like to see gem labs around the world operating to your I S O documentation standards. But that unfortunately is not the case. Now you applied it to Faechui. With Faechui, it is a difficult, difficult for, I think, still difficult for people in the, the West or east outside China and Hong Kong to fully understand the concept of Faechui. I think you, you quite rightly said it's a work in process. And I think it will continue to be that. I mean, I'm looking at, I, I have a question for you straight away. I, I just, while you were making your excellent presentations, I downloaded something from e legislation dot gov dot H K, which speaks to Faechui. But this document is from two thousand and nineteen. Is this document still existent or, or has it been overtaken? Do you know?
Okay, may I ask Edwards to share? And because Edwards, together with me, to have a sharing in two thousand nineteen in Bahrain. Thanks.
Yes, during the times, okay, in, I mean, in two thousand and nineteen, the Sibto Congress, okay, we have a presentation in the Faechui Special Sections and we talk about the definition, naming creatures, and also the, the histories, the culture, and also the why we use the names of Faechui that especially there's some scientific research on it. After that, the Sibto also invited me to give a presentation, a webinar in, after a few months, it should be also in two thousand and nineteen. So maybe you download that, okay, webinar, okay, that videos from that webinar. From that Sibto webinar, is it? Is it this one?
No, no, the, the, my, I just, I just downloaded it from, from a government site in Hong Kong, a government site in Hong Kong.
Government site, oh, maybe, yeah, the one, maybe.
No, it's okay. I, I was just wondering if it's still existent or not. Certainly, I, I remember very well the excellent presentations you gave in Bahrain, superbly presented, very professionally. I, I just, I just feel that we need to, we need to, as you say, it's a work in progress. We need, we need in the West to understand things a little better. And I think you'll find our, our ears are open and our minds are open. And we, we, we want to move along with you in that understanding.
Thank, thank you, Ken. I think the important is that how we can transfer, I mean, our knowledge, I mean, to the Western consumer. I think like one of my, one of my client who is a France, my friend is a France client. Several years ago, he showed me one of his Faechui stitches, which is a, something passed, passed through from his grandfather. By the time his grand, his grandfather, he has make business in China in a kind of trade dynasty. So that actually, even hundreds of years ago, you know, Western people already know when they travel China, they know about Faechui, they know about our culture. So, but I think, I think one of the important, why we initiate Faechui, the name globally recognized through Sibto, I think important is that we want to continue the, I mean, the story, you know, not today or, or in the future, so that we can create opportunity for every people, they can enjoy the beauty of Faechui, the king of gems, a common gemstone. Yeah, that is some of my idea. And Norman, you, 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 do you think you have something to, to, to share?
Thank you, Ken. Actually, I think it's very impressive that Ken give very positive comment on the I S O based laboratory of who provide a Faechui testing service. In Hong Kong, we have a quite well-known accredited Faechui laboratory. I just have a sharing with Ken and say, they can, they have report more than ten thousand Faechui testing report a year to the, to their client, covering from the high end, maybe international option house to usual status customer. So yes, that is a fact and also some data, I think we can later share with you all. And I think for the framework and then we propose here actually to show what we have learned from the past twenty years. Because it's not easy starting from a geological background, geologists to have a new learning from, in the, in the I S O one seven oh two five. And also after the learning, we have to practice in laboratory. And also, we need to know how to lead the team of geologists and supporting staff to perform as we write down on the I S O document. So it's really exciting and also a new world, I think everyone should know and enter later on. So thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Can, can I just, just come back on that? Operating to I S O standards, I, I S O laboratory standards is a wonderful thing. And I, it is, like I said earlier on, I'm jealous that you've managed to do that in, in Hong Kong. Fantastic. The, the issues we have really is understanding the definitions of Faechui and how we should look at that and, and develop it, if necessary, into some kind of documentation within, within Sibto. I know Henko next to me has done, did, did a tremendous job in trying to look at that on a global basis. Maybe we can ask Henko to recall.
Yes, we are appreciate to hear from Ken, Henko, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we, of course, from our end also looked into this. And a few years ago, we conducted a survey among, yeah, many people who dealt with Faechui and jadeite in general. And we actually found that in Asia, there was some, some slight difference in opinion. Some would call Faechui really a very high-quality jadeite and so be that. And of course, in Hong Kong, you have a kind of broader definition. Well, we concluded from that survey that we could list the name Faechui in the gem definitions chapter, what we are now have written, the first version. And we listed it as a trade name, which is really what we now understand, a China-specific name. what we now understand, a China-specific name. But I know your ambitions, of course, so, but we listed it as a trade name and was understood to be jadeite jade, and we understand also that it's more loosely applied also to omphacite and cosmochlore. But that it is essentially jadeite jade is there. And yeah, so it's really listed as a trade name. And we also made clear that we feel that if you use that name, or if that name is used, that it should be clear to which minerals actually are you refer. So if the name Faechui is used, then yeah, a customer is entitled to know what kind of, what it is, jadeite or green omphacite, perhaps.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Henk Ho. Any other, Andrew, Edward?
Yes, let me say something about it, okay. I also, I'm quite agree with Mr. Ken Wong, okay, as he said that in his PowerPoint, there is a significant growth in the jade market in recent years. And live streaming becoming, becomes the mainstreams in Faechui business. As we know, the e-commerce live streaming has changed customers' behaviors. For example, most of the dealers only have to go directly to the jade market constantly or directly, and they, and some customers' behaviors may change also. And customers perceive the values of live streaming, and also customers' trust and engagement highly relied on the host knowledge of products, of the product. Those hosts, holders must be maybe the streamers or the internet celebrities. And, but do they really know about their products, which is provided by other dealers? And where they come from, their origin and locality, where are they being treated? They don't know about it. So this make the definition, the Faechui definitions more important. And it's, their products, capabilities mainly rely on the test reports. And the test reports, okay, and the Faechui definition and internationally accepted standard, especially the testing standard, become essential to the industry. As Dr. Norman Shu said, the reliability of the test reports is relied on the competence of man, that is, the human factors becomes very important as one of the five key factors in the quality management system of laboratories. That is my comment. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Edward. I think that is very important, how we build talent, right? How we sustain the talent, and how we, say, talking about knowledge management, okay? So I would like to ask another expert from G I T, Mr. Sumi, you know, can you share some of your will about the manpower of the lab, which is important for the success and also sustainability of the lab operation? So can you give some advice to the professional writer team in order to draw the discussion draft? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I'd like to share, in Thailand, the journey of standard of gems and Faechui has been pivotal traditionally. Pajest market lack of precise definition. In the beginning, all the customer, all the report, it will be mentioned only the jadeite. And a lot of Chinese tourists that come to Thailand, they are talking about Faechui, they don't understand the jadeite, right? That is the starting point for G I T to consider and then looking for the standard of Faechui. And in 2019, we start to do the M O U with G S K, and we learn together, and since then, we have a project to improve the standard of Thai gemology called G I T standard, like. We are trying to gather all the laboratory standard, the gemology standard, and everything. Faechui is also one of category that we are working together with G S K and implemented the market, right? The standard of Faechui is quite striving the clear definition and testing standard, which is focused on gems, right? The collaboration with the gem and jewelry association of Hong Kong, G S K, and the National Gemstone Testing Center N G T C of China have define element of Faechui very clearly, comparing to the jadeite in the past, and it's like a quite simple for Chinese people, they know very well about Faechui, since they call this stone at a Faechui like a from a thousand years, right? This align with the standard between Hong Kong and Thailand, right? And for the point that, how the Western will recognize, I think the, this will be like a, since Sichuan creating the Faechui committee had become crucial platform for industry-wise coordination, this brought the confidence among the consumer and facilitated the integration of international market. And I believe that very near future, the Faechui will be recognized by the Western as well.
Mr. Sumi, I think, once again, we thank you for your big hand to become our advisor of the professional writer team. Thank you so much for contribution. I think, and I think because time is, I think you only have a kind of 10 minute left behind. I think the last question I would like to ask my dearest president, Dr. Getano. I think, one first question, I think, how do you think about E S G, you know? Actually, this is a very important topic for the, for our industry to learn, I think first of all, to learn and to implement in the future. I think that is, I don't doubt you have a lot of idea. So how do you see E S G would contribute to the Faechui, I mean, topic? Or can you give some advice to our working team? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. This is a great question. We are working on E S G's protocols since a long while. In fact, the first presentation, it will be done into the Laboratory Grown Diamond Committee, where good friends and top consultants and professors from United Kingdom have presented to our attention after several months of studies, meetings, video conferences, a chart that unfortunately, you all are not here, but it will be presented tomorrow. But it will be a pleasure, once it's been present, to share with everyone, with everyone, including all of you. The essence of E S G's are the following. Apart the meaning of the letters E, S, and G, meaning environment, social, and governance, what we have requested is the following. Follow rules, regulations, national, international, or internal rules within a company. And I, in this case, refer to the company under your leadership, Cho Taifuk, is essential in order to produce a better way to exercise businesses. We have requested to these friends to underline the fact that all the elements related to E S G, just to cut a long story short, are producing benefit and more income to every company, despite how big is the company or how small is the company. It doesn't make any difference. Because as we said, and I take the example of the Faechui standard on jade, because you said and you mentioned one of your client from France, well, we have to be, to bring to France, or to the United States, or all over the world, those principles in terms that they may better understand the meaning, the value, and how precious is jade and jadeite, despite all the story that are around the meaning of jade and jadeite in that part of the world, meaning the east part of the world. But also, in the other side, I saw quite recently an auction by, I think, Sortavis, where jade was sold for many million dollars. So there is also the financial meeting of that. But in coming back to the E S G's, the E S G's are essential. We are, again, working not only in the Laboratory Grown Diamond, but we are thinking seriously to extend to every section, every commission, every committee, and sectors of Sichuan in order that we will give the indication of the importance of following those rules. We will explain in a very simple way. I cannot anticipate, the president of the Laboratory Committee is looking at me. I would like to show you some slides, but unfortunately, I cannot in this moment. But you will receive the presentation in order that you will go directly to your conclusion. And obviously, when this will be done in the next days, I would like to receive the comment of all those that are interested and may give their comment to us. So yes, that is the right direction. Yes, we are taking into serious consideration since a while. And your question is put appropriately, because this is the time to go. Thank you very much, Ken. And I want, taking the opportunity that I have the floor, to thank all of you, Sumed, Ken, and Anko, for the interesting, important organizations that all of you in Hong Kong and China have been so kind to present to the Congress. And I can see here that the room is quite full, but it is important that we go forward. And I believe that soon, by the next Congress, we will be able in, from this Congress to the next, to present some serious document to go to the conclusion that is the goal of our meeting. So, Ken, as usual, you did a great job, and also the colleagues over there. And I want to thank through you, all of them.
Thank you, thank you. Before we end our Faechui discussion and Faechui sections, I would like to, once again, to thank Sichuan, Sichuan team, and especially Dr. Getano, I think, under your leadership. I think the Faechui working group growing very smooth. Very, I think, we hope that after this conference, we can move faster. And then I hope that Faechui will contribute. This is opportunity for the jewelry industry internationally, not only talking about the story of this, but a story of this and a story for the world. Thank you so much. So let's work together to make it come true. Thank you, anybody's participation today. Thank you so much.
Let me take this opportunity, Ken, before we leave, to express my deep appreciation to Simon Hui that you send here in Jaipur, that he gave a great presentation during the Diamond Commission. I want to tell you live, you know, so thank you very much. And this is the contribution that you and Cho Taifuk are giving to the World Jewelry Community, more than the World Jewelry Confederation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. My appreciation, thank you all for contribute the prosperity and better future for the jewelry industry globally. Thank you.
Wonderful, I think that there is now.
Bye, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, all the best. Thank you, bye-bye, see you soon.